We'd like to call the caucus to order. First piece of legislation is from Finance Committee for Emergency Passage. An ordinance authorizing the clerk of the Village of Lordstown to pay the son of thirty-six-thousand, seven-hundred-and-five dollars and twenty-two cents to the Lordstown Board of Education pursuant to the income tax sharing agreement. The Village of Lordstown has enacted with Lordstown Board of Education to share income taxes generated from new employees of Interior Magnus Heating of America Inc. and declaring an emergency. Comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This is just something we'd like to see passed tonight for emergency.
Okay, any other comments? Next is from Transportation Senior Services Plan and Zoning and Recreation Department Committee for Emergency Passage. An ordinance amending and restating ordinance number 22, 2014, creating various seasonal part-time employment positions for the summer 2015 rec program, setting wages for the same and declaring an emergency. Comments? Okay, any other comments? The next one's also from Transportation Committee. An ordinance amending and restating ordinance number 77, 2007, establishing a policy governing participation in the village's recreation programs and declaring an emergency. Comments? Okay, any other comments? Next is from Public Safety and Welfare Committee for Emergency Passage and ordinance amending and restating in part ordinance number 17, 2015, authorizing the Lordstown Fire Department to provide statewide mutual aid services pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 9.60, to be retroactive to March 16, 2015, and declaring an emergency. Comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We're changing Section 4 on this from what was a hundred dollars. We're going to change it to ten dollars. And we would like to see this passed this evening. Thank you.
Okay, are there any other comments? Okay, the next is from Streets Sidewalks, Public Parks, Buildings, Grounds and General Improvement Committee for Emergency Passage. An ordinance amending and restating ordinance number 40, 2014, creating temporary seasonal part-time summer positions within the streets and parks departments of the Village of Lordstown for the 2015 season and declaring an emergency. Comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We'd like to see this passed this evening, too. We also have a notice in our mailboxes to appoint two people for that, so we'd like to get that passed so that Dale can get these two gentlemen hired and get them working since the weather's broken.
Okay, any other comments? Next is from the same committee. An ordinance authorizing purchase of one new 2015 GMC Sierra 2500 HD four-by-four truck through the Ohio Cooperative Purchasing Program from the Collection Auto Group, Buick GMC of Beachwood, 25975 Central Parkway, Beachwood, Ohio 44112, and declaring an emergency. Comments?
Yes, we'd also like to see this passed this evening so we can get that truck purchased.
Okay, any other comments? Last one's from Finance Committee for Emergency Passage. A resolution authorizing the Village of Lordstown to continue participation through fiscal years 2016, 2018 under the consortium agreement, Home Investment Partnership Agreement with the City of War in Tormal County, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. Comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We'd also like to see this passed tonight.
Any other comments? Hearing none, are there any questions on the minutes in front of you for passage? Disposal this evening. Hearing none, are there any questions on the bills? Hearing none, is there anything council would like to bring up and discuss at this time? Only thing I have is everybody should have had in their box three appointments, one full-time for the roads and two others for summer health. And we'll be asking for two executive sessions later on, the end of the meeting. There will be no action taken after those executive sessions. Is there anything else the council would like to discuss at this time?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. After our last finance meeting, just wanted to report to the rest of the council who wasn't there, that we had to request to look at the engineering maybe going out for RFQs. So what we're going to do is after Paul gets back, we're going to get with them to get some language put together for some advertising for that, and then we'll get it out for bid on that, and we'll take it from that. So I have.
Okay. Anything else?
I see the North Point developers have started working on clearing that property down there. I thought they were going to leave a tree line.
Well, that's what I thought, too, but Dale gave me a call one day and said, "They're gone." Of course, you know, there are. Their only good thing is there's no houses around there, so hopefully they will, you know, make it nicer when they get done landscaping and everything.
Yeah. It doesn't look like there's a whole lot of property between where they're going to be building these buildings and the road, so it'd be hard for them to put a tree line in there even.
Well, I don't think it'd be that tough. You only need twenty foot for a tree line.
Maybe they'll...
One thing I did ask the gentleman at one of the meetings that we had with him and stuff, I said, "This isn't going to be one of the industrial parks with just metal buildings and pavement." And he said, "No, it's going to be block buildings and it will be landscaped to look nice."
Okay. Anything else from council? Well, now during the caucus, we go into the regular meeting. I'd like to welcome everybody for coming this evening. Please stand and join me in the first prayer. Praise the Lord.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us today our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. In whose judgment temptation but deliverance to evil, for thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever. Amen. Praise the Lord. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of the United States, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mark Twain, we got a roll call, please. Mayor Hill, present. Mr. Vaughn, here. Mr. Mansell, present. Mr. Ratta, present. Mrs. Jones, present. Mr. Shealy, present. Mr. Reader, present. Mark Twain, present. Frederick George Adlin, here. Matthew and Satch, here. Police Chief Brad Melhough, present. Fire Chief Travis Easton. Planning, zoning, economic development, Kelly Ordner, present. Parks, Buildings, Grounds, Recreation, Commissioner Dale Brim, present. Recreation, Marty Getzel, here. Department of Public Affairs, here. Chris Kajalik, National Engineering. Okay, I want to entertain a motion to excuse Chief Easton. Everybody knows he's on the afternoon shift. He does not have a report this evening. And also to excuse Chris Kajalik. He has to be excused. He has other obligation. I'll entertain a motion to excuse those two. Move by Mansell, second. Second by Shealy. Comments? All favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Entertained a motion for adoption in the agenda. Move by Jones, second. Second. Second, Mansell. Comments? All favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Entertained a motion for disposal of the minutes, the regular meeting held March 16, 2015. Move by Ratta, second. Shealy, comments? All favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Entertained a motion for payment of the bills. Move by Shealy, second by Vaughn. Comments? All favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Mayor's report. I'll be asking for two executive sessions this evening. Everybody should have had three appointments in their boxes. Geez, everybody wonders why everything's so bright in here. We probably about a third or halfway through our lighting project, and we have all-new lighting in here, so definitely lit up the place a little bit. And as mentioned earlier, the industrial park is getting cleaned out, and if things do according to plan, by midsummer, there should maybe be a 650,000 square foot warehouse going in. But we don't have any specifics on that. That was just a word we were given, but we haven't got any particulars yet. That's it for the mayor's reports. Are there clerks' reports this evening?
No report, Mayor.
Is there a solicitor's report?
There is not, dear.
Okay, is there a treasurer's report?
No report.
Or the trustees of public affairs report?
No report.
Okay, the village engineers not here. Special reports? Police Chief Melhough?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Just have two things. I submitted my monthly report for March. If you have any questions, try to answer them. The second thing is I want to make you aware, this Friday, 10 o'clock in the morning, the police department along with the fire department will be participating in a mock crash at the high school. The purpose of the crash, the mock crash, is to hopefully get the students to understand the importance of making good decisions, especially when it's prom time. Lordstown's prom will be a week after this Friday, the 17th, and we were asked, the police department along with the fire department, we're asked to participate in this. There will be a helicopter also on site. The school will be sending out an all-call on their all-call system just to let the parents know, because sometimes when they see, when people see a police fire and a helicopter head to the school, it sends people into panic, so we want to try to minimize that as much as possible. So just want to make you aware of that. That'll take place again this Friday at 10:00 in the morning, weather permitting. Alternative date would be Monday, 13th, if it's raining on Friday.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Brett? Okay, Fire Chief Lamont here. Planning and zoning administrator and Director of Economic Development, Kelly.
I submitted my report by email and hard copy in the boxes, so if there's any questions that you have, you can.
Any questions for Kelly? Okay, Parks, Grounds, Buildings, Streets Superintendent, Mr. Grimm.
As you say, Mr. Mayor, the LED lighting project is underway. They've got the street department almost complete. They've got the garage base, the fire station, the police station, the lights in here in the caucus room. They were working on exterior lighting and parking lot lights. The lower parking lot poles here in the administration building and library lots are all completed. They're kind of getting, the lights are being delivered randomly as to how GE's filling the orders, so they're kind of bouncing around. They can't go to one building and do it complete, so they've been working pretty much every day. They are running out of lights right now. I got a report Friday that the trotter lights that we have in here, the next order is actually going to be three to four weeks away. So General Electric contacted Martin, who's the supplier from Gray Bar, and asked if we would be willing to upgrade our lights to meet the time restrictions for the grants and stuff through Ohio Edison. So we're actually, the rest of the buildings are actually going to be getting the next grade up lights. They're going to physically look the same, but these ones here, you can't open and close. Those ones, you'll be able to open and close for cleaning purposes, and also you'll be able to put them on a dimmer switch if we so choose to do that in the future. So, and that's no additional cost to us, or they're going to do that so we can meet our deadline.
Okay, thank you. Questions for Dale? Recreation, Marty. Any questions for Marty? Correspondence, we have any correspondence this evening?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The clerk did receive a letter from a resident, and he asked me to read it in my permission.
Sure.
This is, "Dear council members, first I would like to introduce myself. My name is Kathy Ross Panchek, and I live at 6825 Palmira Road. I came to Lordstown three years ago from Gerard after I married my husband, Richard Panchek. While I was in Gerard, I served on the City of Gerard Board of Health. I would love to have the opportunity to attend your meeting, but they are all held in the evenings, and I work an afternoon shift, preventing me from attending. I do read the council minutes on your website and greatly appreciate the access. Working in the evenings is also preventing me from running for any political offices here in Lordstown, which I would love to do one day, as I miss being involved after leaving Gerard. A few concerns have recently been brought to my attention, one of which being Lafarge. I understand higher-than-normal reading of arsenic have been found in well testings. I would hope you will be sending out warning letters to adjacent homeowners informing them of the leaching arsenic, as there are still people in the surrounding vicinity that still use well water, albeit for water and gardens of personal use. As you know, I live on Palmira. I can say without talking to any of my former college colleagues that Lafarge is becoming somewhat of a nuisance. They have had numerous air particulate violations. I could go on to say the landfill height is close to being reached, as you can see it towering over the township. The dust in my house is unbearable, which can be tested, and my view out the front window, which was serene, is now downright frightening. I would also like to draw attention to the noise pollution we are experiencing. Ever since the Tormal County Board of Health denied their application for expansion, it seems they are not giving a hoot about their excess noise nuisance. I do not believe we should have to rearrange pictures on our walls daily, look for new cracks on our plastered walls, or make sure items are anchored down on shelves just because they are banging around so loudly it could wake the dead in Walderson Cemetery on Selkirk Bush Road. I am sure if I owned a seismic monitor, it would register. I'm looking into purchasing one, as I write. I do have a metal detector, and when the wind is blowing from the direction of the landfill, my metal detector won't work. Why, you ask? Because it is constantly beeping, picking up metal in the air. Now on to the wonderful smell. It doesn't happen always, but when it does, it's bad. Being on the Board of Health, I do know where it's coming from. Here is the hotline number for all those in attendance tonight who would like to file a complaint about the smell. The number is 330-963-1212. The odor is coming from the leachate collection system. Now on to my third area of complaint with a bit of history for this one. The first commercial use of natural gas occurred in Britain around 1795. The British used it to light houses and streets. In 1816, Baltimore, Maryland, used natural gas to be the first city in the United States to light its streets. Yet in the year 2015, I can't get natural gas to my house on Palmira Road. Oral gas started, then stopped. Was there a contract with this company? Can we come up with, can we come up the other way, as the mayor has it on my shirt? I will be researching what's going on. Thirdly, I am disheartened over the water safety in the Village of Lordstown. As you may or may not know, to protect drinking water from disease-causing organisms and pathogens, water suppliers often add disinfectants such as chlorine to drinking water. Disinfectants used can also pose a threat when they react with naturally occurring elements in the water to form dangerous byproducts which can cause cancer. These levels are monitored by the EPA. Lordstown has been out of compliance and has let these levels remain a threat to the public for longer than should be. Notices of violations from the Ohio EPA have been sent to the Village of Lordstown exceeding trihalomethanes, T-R-I-H-A-L-O-M-E-T-H-A-N-E-S, and/or haloacetic acids numerous times in the year 2014 and 2015. A notice for late reporting of samples was also sent to the village. Some people who drink water in excess of the maximum levels of those two chemicals are at an increased risk of getting cancer, according to the EPA website. Some people who drink water in excess of the maximum levels are also at risk of liver, kidney, and central nervous system disorders, and are at an increased risk of getting cancer, according to the EPA website. Also, on July 10, 2014, Lordstown was in violation with the Ohio EPA for operating without an appropriately certified operator record. You should be on-site to operate the technical operation of the water system. I would like to know if this has been addressed, thus maybe correcting some of the issues Lordstown is having with their exceedances of these dangerous byproducts in our drinking water. All current and past violations can be found at EDOC PUB dot EPA dot Ohio dot gov slash publicportal slash EDOC Chrome dot ASPX. These two chemical dangers can be found on the EPA website, and it is recommended discussing these issues with the MVSD. In closing, I would like to thank you for your time and would appreciate any feedback. I am also hopeful that Mayor Hill and the dedicated council members can and will address these issues in the near future. Sincerely, Kathy Ross Panchek.
Okay, more correspondence. Okay, public remarks. If you'd like to make a public remark after acknowledging, please come to the microphone so we can hear your name and address recorded in the minutes correctly. Public remarks. Angela.
My name's Angela Mollachek. I live at 6209 Palmira Road, Southwest. First of all, that Kathy reached out to me. I thought she was going to be here today, so I was down here. But I just wanted to thank you for organizing that meeting. It did help get some answers. There's still some unresolved issues. But I did, with our neighbors at Newton Falls, they gave me some violations. I did go to the Tormal County Board of Health to get any current violations in the last two years. They only made me two. After talking to some people from Newton Falls, they gave me copies of additional ones that some of these don't have, that Lordstown received them. I didn't have a chance to give these to you at the meeting, so I just wanted to present them to you now.
I'll take them.
And that's all.
Okay. Thank you, Angela. Are there any other public remarks? Mike.
Good evening. As you know, for the last, I guess, 10 years, the village and the local union have been partners in Relay for Life. A couple of years ago, we picked up Liberty and the Christian Church, and what we normally do is put 300 in from the union and 300 from the village to get the 10 things that we're going to sell the day of the relay. So what I'm asking is if we could get a motion for the $300 tonight. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Are there any other public remarks? Okay, hearing none, we'll go on to council remarks. Anything council would like to say at this time? Bruce, do you want to address any of the letter which had come up at this time, or just talking?
I can. Come up there.
Okay.
Bruce Platt, 1952 Salt Springs Road. I'm the utility superintendent here. The questions that were raised with the last letter, the letter that was read, the one in particular that I can address is the licensed operator of Lordstown's. I've been the licensed operator for the utility department of the water system since 2004. I've always maintained a license. There was a clerical error at the Ohio EPA of some confusion over license numbers. So we, they asked us to just, this was in July of last year, they asked us to, well, just send out a new form with your current license on it, and that whenever they issue a violation, they never issue a thing that says, "Oh, you are now in compliance," you know. They just, that's a website that shows the notices of violation. As far as the disinfectant byproduct testing goes, the one violation, our first violation that we had was in 2013. That was for a failure to sample. What happened there was Lordstown, we take our samples as we do and prescribed by the state, and according to their schedule, we submitted them to the laboratory. The laboratory broke our samples. They had an accident that the samples got broken in February of 2013. Since they were broken, they notified us, and we could not take fresh samples because you have to take them during the first week of February. And they broke them on February 10th, which is later than that. So that forced us, we are no longer using that lab. We use another lab. The second violation that we received was, we received one for failure to report the sample results for our December, or actually our November of 2014. The lab, there's the lab that does the testing, everything submitted electronically to the state. They, our lab, for whatever reason, didn't push the right button. The results did not get sent to the state. They have been sent. The state has issued us a letter saying that we accept those, and you're no longer in violation. They rescinded that violation. Our results, the disinfectant byproduct testing results, they are coming back. They are a little bit above what's called a maximum contaminant level, or MCL. It is not a violation if they are above that maximum contaminant level unless you're running total of the four previous tests all average above the maximum contaminant level. We are expecting to possibly get a violation. When we test in May, we had Anthony Vigorito from the MVSD get our last Department of Public Affairs meeting. I'm working with MVSD on how we can combat this. It's a result of, they are now, MVSD and Meander Water, they are changing the way that they treat the water now. It's going through a clarifier. They had a, maybe like a $50 million construction project last year, but ongoing for about three previous years. It's a better way to treat the water, however, things happen. It's releasing the calcium that lines our water lines a little more than our current water, so we're getting high results. So it's going to get better, but we have to do more flushing and that kind of stuff in order for it to get better. So hopefully in the near future, where we do our tests, too, they ask you to test at the lowest point of use. So where we take our tests from, in one location at the corner of Wood Leonard and Hewitt Gifford, there's nobody, no user within approximately a quarter mile of that sample site. So therefore, the water stays there a long time. Our other site that we draw our tests from is at the corner of Yerkey Young and Warren Austintown Road. And again, we're, we've got a quarter mile of water line in each direction from there. So we always change valves, close valves, try to move the water, try to flush the water, and we're just, you know, experiencing a little bit on the high end of the samples results right now, you know. But as far as licensed operator, I've always been here. I've always been licensed. It's unfortunate that that was, that letter went out to us, but, you know, we are in compliance, and we have been in compliance with a licensed operator. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer them as best I can.
Any questions for Bruce? He should get some clarification there.
So actually, everything that was mentioned in there is at no fault to Lordstown Village?
As far as I could, I have not, I've gone to that website, I've clicked that link, and I keep getting a, you know, page unavailable, so I haven't seen those, but, you know...
We had a clerical error on the license. We had a accident at the testing facility that was no fault of Lordstown.
Right.
And actually, the treatment of water, Lordstown doesn't treat the water. That's done at the Meander District.
Right, correct, you know.
So I mean, in other words, what I'm trying to say to our residents, our drinking water is safe.
Right. And Mr. Vigorito, he explained that the level that they're talking about as far as the contamination and in order for it to be remotely harmful to you, if you're a healthy individual, is you'd have to drink two liters of water for every day that you're alive for 70 years in order for you to get something. So it, those are his words, you know. I haven't been able to check that particular thing out, you know, but it's, you know, it's something that could become serious, and we do have to look after it, you know, and we are doing that.
You are on top of it. Okay, thank you, Bruce. Are there any other, anybody else from council want to comment on that?
The only thing I'd like to say to the people in the audience that are here, it's nice that people are concerned and they look at stuff like this. This is, this is great that people do that, but we have contact numbers. People wanted the contact numbers on the website. Our department head, that utility superintendent, our street superintendent, got a question. I mean, sometimes the internet is not as accurate in information as people think it is. Like this EPA website, they put violations on there and stuff, but like Bruce said, they won't put in... they won't put in there. This has been taken care of, this was a mistake on our part and stuff like that. Contact the department heads or somebody sitting up there, and we'll get ahold of the department heads and get information back to you. Because if this had not been addressed and stuff, this could make it look like Lordstown's got poisonous water, we're not doing what we're supposed to do. I mean, that's why these contact numbers are on the website. The residents requested that, and it's there.
Are there any other council remarks? I would like to just quickly address the issue about the natural gas was brought up in the letter. Last year, Orwell gas ran approximately four and a half mile of gas line in the village in Northwest Quadrant. They have plans to be able to come south of the railroad tracks on Bailey, to be able to pick up Bailey and other areas. The reason that was not done yet is because there was a shakeup at management at Orwell Gas. There was another company, which was Rural Ohio Natural Gas, which come from Halleck Young and Lince up to the Turnpike. And I believe some of the principals in that company were at one time with Orwell Natural Gas. One thing which Orwell did do is when they ran the gas lines, they did not charge anybody a front footage assessment. When we looked this, looked at this project over the last many years, Dominion would give, you signed up for gas, Dominion would give you 100 foot for free. The thing is, to get to your 100 foot, they wanted, they were asking, it was to spend anywhere between $14 and $21 a foot. I know last year was $17.70 a foot. So if you had to run that approximately 1,000 foot, there'd be $17,000. Somebody would have to come up with the money. So when Orwell ran the gas lines, it served us a lot of residents. I believe there will be some resolve with some of the issues with Orwell Gas, hopefully in the next two to three months, and they can continue running gas lines because I know this last winter, we have a lot of senior citizens or even people who are still working. The cost of propane and fuel oil is outlandish, so as we get more information, we will pass that on to residents.
Why don't you mention the fact that we don't have a contract with these people?
This, and this is a private company. We do not have a contract. We are in support of them running gas lines. Two or three years ago, I did put some money in an account to try to jumpstart the gas lines, and the solicitor said we could not use village funds to enhance a private entity. And I'm looking at a couple of different ways to try to jumpstart these gas lines because I know the north end of Todd does not have gas, Rustic Run does not have gas. There's large areas on the east end of Lince Road, Selkirk Bush, there's parts on Palmyra Road which do not have gas. You know, a lot of people think, well, let the village run it. We cannot put money in a private entity like that, and we do not have a contract. However, we have been supportive of their efforts to run the gas lines. Okay, committee reports. Finally, ask Mr. Rata.
Just two pieces of legislation we'd like to see passed emergency tonight.
Any questions for Ron? Parks, Buildings, Grounds, General Bruton, Streets and Sidewalks, Mrs. Jones.
Yes, we have two pieces of legislation on the agenda tonight, and we'd like to see both of those passed to emergency, please.
Any questions for Karen? Public Safety and Welfare, Mr. Reader.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. We have one piece of legislation we'd like to have this evening also. That's all, thank you.
Any questions for Dawn? Public Utilities, Mr. Vaughn.
I have no report this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Any questions for Vaughn? Transportation and Recreation and Senior Services, Mr. Shealy.
Just two pieces of legislation we'd like to pass tonight.
Okay, any questions for Howard? Okay, Bill, we got the first piece of legislation.
From the Finance Committee for Emergency Passage, an ordinance authorizing the clerk of the village of Lordstown to pay the sum of $36,722. The Lordstown Board of Education pursuant to the income tax sharing agreement, the village of Lordstown has enacted the Lordstown Board of Education to share income taxes generated from new employees of interior Magna Seating of America Inc. and declare an emergency.
Comments or motions on this piece of legislation?
Motion to suspend.
Motion to suspend the rules by Rata, second by Jones. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Rata?
Yes.
Mr. Shealy?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Mansell?
Yes.
Mr. Reader?
Yes.
Six eyes, zero nays, motion carried to adopt ordinance 20, 2015.
From Transportation, Senior Services, Planning and Zoning and Recreation Department Committee for Emergency Passage, an ordinance amending and restating ordinance number 22, 2014, creating various seasonal part-time summer positions for the summer 2015 recreation program, setting wages for the same in the fire and emergency.
Comments or motions on this piece of legislation?
Motion to suspend the rules.
Motion to suspend the rules by Mansell, second?
Second.
Second, Rata, roll call, please.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Rata?
Yes.
Mr. Mansell?
Yes.
Mr. Shealy?
Yes.
Six eyes, zero nays, motion carried to suspend the rules. Their motion to adopt?
So moved.
Moved by Vaughn, second, Shealy. Comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Shealy?
Yes.
Mr. Rata?
Yes.
Mr. Mansell?
Yes.
Mr. Shealy?
Yes.
Mr. Reader?
Yes.
Six eyes, zero nays, motion carried to suspend the rules. Their motion to adopt?
So moved.
Moved by Vaughn, second, Shealy. Comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Shealy?
Yes.
Mr. Rata?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Reader?
Yes.
Mr. Mansell?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Six eyes, zero nays, motion carried to adopt ordinance 21, 2015. Next, please.
From Transportation, Senior Services, Planning and Zoning and Recreation Department Committee for Emergency Passage, an ordinance amending in park and restating ordinance number 77, 2007, establishing a policy of government participation in the village of Lordstown recreation programs and declaring emergency.
Comments or motions on this piece of legislation?
Thank you, motion to suspend the rule.
Motion to suspend the rule by Shealy, second?
Second.
Second by Jones, roll call, please.
Mr. Mansell?
Yes.
Mr. Reader?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Rata?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Shealy?
Yes.
Six eyes, zero nays, motion carried to suspend the rules. Their motion to adopt?
So moved.
Moved by Mansell, second?
Second.
Second by Jones. Comments? Roll call, please. Mr. Reader?
Yes.
Mr. Mansell?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Rata?
Yes.
Mr. Shealy?
Yes.
Six eyes, zero nays, motion carried to adopt ordinance 22, 2015. That's right.
From Public Safety and Welfare Committee for Emergency Passage, an ordinance amending and restating in part ordinance 17, 2015, authorizing the Lordstown Power Department to provide a statewide mutual aid service for Zillik, the Iowa Rise Code, Section 9.60 and all, to be retroactive to March 16th, 2015, and declaring emergency.
Comments or motions on this piece of legislation?
Thank you, motion to suspend the rule.
Motion to suspend the rule by Shealy, second?
Second.
Second by Reader, roll call, please.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Rata?
Yes.
Mr. Shealy?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Reader?
Yes.
Mr. Mansell?
Yes.
Six eyes, zero nays, motion carried to suspend the rules. Their motion to adopt?
So moved.
Moved by Rata, second by Shealy. Comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Reader?
Yes.
Mr. Shealy?
Yes.
Mr. Rata?
Yes.
Mr. Mansell?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Reader?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Shealy?
Yes.
Six eyes, zero nays, motion carried to suspend the rules. Their motion to adopt?
So moved.
Moved by Shealy, second?
Second.
Second by Jones. Comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Reader?
Yes.
Mr. Shealy?
Yes.
Mr. Rata?
Yes.
Mr. Mansell?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Rata?
Yes.
Mr. Shealy?
Yes.
Six eyes, zero nays, motion carried to suspend the rules. Their motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second by Shealy, second Vaughn, comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Rata?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Shealy?
Yes.
Mr. Mansell?
Yes.
Mr. Reader?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Six eyes, zero nays, motion carried to adopt ordinance 24, 2015. Next, please.
From Streets, Sidewalks, Public Parks, Buildings, Grounds, and General Bruton Committee for Emergency Passage, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of one new 2015 GMC Sierra 2500 HD four-by-four truck for a lot of purchasing program from the collection of the auto group view of GMC of Beachwood 25975 Central Parkway, Beachwood, Ohio 44122, and declaring emergency.
Comments or motions on this piece of legislation?
Motion to suspend.
Motion to suspend the rule by Mansell, second Shealy, roll call, please.
Mr. Shealy?
Yes.
Mr. Reader?
Yes.
Mr. Rata?
Yes.
Mr. Mansell?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Six eyes, zero nays, motion carried to suspend the rules. Their motion to adopt?
So moved.
Moved by Shealy, second?
Second.
Second by Jones, comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Mansell?
Yes.
Mr. Reader?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Shealy?
Yes.
Mr. Rata?
Yes.
Mr. Shealy?
Yes.
Six eyes, zero nays, motion carried to adopt ordinance 25, 2015. Next, please.
From Finance Committee for Emergency Passage, a resolution authorizing the village of Lordstown to continue participation through the fiscal years 2016 through 2018 in the Source Shield Agreement Home Investment Partnership Program with the city of Warren, Ohio and Trumbull County, Ohio, and declaring emergency.
Comments or motions on this piece of legislation?
Motion to suspend.
Motion to suspend the rules? Motion by Rata to suspend the rules, second?
Second.
Second by Shealy, roll call, please.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Rata?
Yes.
Mr. Shealy?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Mansell?
Yes.
Mr. Reader?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Six eyes, zero nays, motion carried to adopt, resolution 3, 2015. Next, please.
From Finance Committee for Emergency Passage, a resolution authorizing the purchase of one new 2015 GMC Sierra 2500 HD four-by-four truck for a lot of purchasing program from the collection of the auto group view of GMC of Beachwood 25975 Central Parkway, Beachwood, Ohio 44122, and declaring emergency.
Comments or motions on this piece of legislation?
Thank you, motion to suspend.
Motion to suspend the rules? Motion by Rata to suspend the rules, second?
Second.
Second by Shealy, roll call, please.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Rata?
Yes.
Mr. Shealy?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Mansell?
Yes.
Mr. Reader?
Yes.
Six eyes, zero nays, motion carried to suspend the rules. Their motion to adopt?
So moved.
Moved by Rata, second?
Second.
Second by Mansell, roll call, please. For comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Shealy?
Yes.
Mr. Rata?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Reader?
Yes.
Mr. Mansell?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Reader?
Yes.
Mr. Mansell?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Six eyes, zero nays, motion carried to adopt, resolution 3, 2015. Is there any old business council would like to discuss at this time?